Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We're running a little behind. We appreciate the Board of Zoning and Adjustments moving their meeting swiftly so that we can come on board with this. This is a call work session to discuss the proposed lodging fee in the city of Prattville. Appreciate everyone being here. That's the clerk, Chicago Row.
Counselor Striplin, Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Chambliss.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Counselor Boing.
What I will do for this particular meeting, it is a work session to discuss this proposal. In our last meeting, the rules were not suspended in order to discuss this issue, and that's why I felt we need to call a work session. What I'm going to do, I'm going to allow each council person to talk about this as they please. We'll go by district. First of all, I'm going to allow the mayor, because he had a proposal or, once I propose, they say, comments concerning this issue, to make his comments, and we will go down the line and let each person make their comments. Now, mayor, if you will.
Yes, sir. Thank you, and I do appreciate you calling this work session, because I think it's very healthy for this community anytime that we have anything as big as this that could very positively impact our community for us to have as much information as possible. But as you see over in our one little box over here, we have quite a few plans that have been compiled by many different administrations over the years, and the city has paid quite a bit for these plans to achieve some really great projects to increase the quality of life here in Prattville. This was our, some of these were our initial investment for these plans. In order for it not to have been wasted taxpayer money, we now need the capital follow-through on the plans. We need funding for the realization of these much-needed improvements, and we need to prioritize these plans as we move forward with them. The master plan, our master plan was in the 2013 budget, Department Head proposal, but was removed due to budgetary shortfalls. And I do plan to have funding for our parks' master plans in the 2014 budget. This master plan will give us the projects that can be funded by the lodging tax if approved by this council. I do anticipate citizen involvement, sports committees, et cetera, to actually help, I guess you can say as a steering committee. And as I have stood up here many times before, I've talked about the productivity study that was done, I believe it was in '05 or '06, and in it, it actually referenced some of that. There's also been some concerns about Elmore County and their involvement, and I can rest you, you know, I want everybody to be rest assured, we have made every effort to include them in this, and it actually has been stated that after this last lodging tax that was applied for by them, that they would not be trying again on that. But I wholeheartedly believe that we need to foster any kind of good relations between all agencies and move forward with this, trying to enhance our parks and increase positive traffic through our parks and actually help decrease crime. Not that we do have a, we do not have a crime issue in these parks, but any kind of additional positive activity you can have out there is always very, very good for our community. If you happen to come down to the Creek Walk or Pratt Park on any of the evenings where it's not raining, you'll notice more and more residents have been up and down our Creek Walk, along our creek, so many different areas. It's been very amazing to me just because we have put forth a very good effort with the limited resources that we do have, but moving forward with a lot of these. You know, much of this has been due to the focus that has been put on the health and wellness of our community. If you couple that focus with the work the Creek Committee and city forces have done on and along the Tagga Creek and our efforts during last summer's Vote Pratt Park contest, you'll find that our citizens are more aware of the opportunities available to them in our parks. And for example, just yesterday, I saw Prattville being showcased on our Coca-Cola Grant Victory advertisement and a commercial on the Golf Channel. So it's just some of those different events like that have actually helped put Prattville on the national spotlight. It also leads toward, all these events actually help lead toward healthier and happier citizens. With the betterment of our park facilities comes a natural increase in revenue as we host, be able to host more events and tournaments. Travel teams and tournaments of all kinds bring in tourism dollars and positively impact our economy by using the heads and beds approach to reinvest in facilities that they have here to enjoy. We have our citizens driving another component of economic development through all of this. We all benefit from the improvements this funding will bring if this council decides to move forward on this. It's just another way to drive economic development. None of this adversely impacts our citizens, our residents. I think it's all impacts them very positively. Some of the projects that we had mentioned and some that are over here in this, in the box and among the many, many projects that are over there that were, did not have the funding available, and that's one reason why I guess I had to knock the dust off of them or the city engineer had to knock the dust off of them and city planner or Kelly Cook, our Parks and Recs director. But we have spoken about a lighting project to upgrade field lights in order to reduce our utility cost. I have that program proposed in that box over there. I have plans here with, for the ADA accessible dock access at Cooters Pond and additional plans for the Tagga Creek Park and the Creek Walk extensions. Those were done by outside sources, but I have plans for the continuation and completion of the Jasmine Trail, East Parkly Park. Those were created internally. I have plans for a swimming pool. Those plans cost us $100,000. And believe me, I know exactly about those because I was on the council whenever that plan was initially, the, not the actual plan, but the expenditure of the $100,000 for those plans was brought before the council, and I voted against those plans. And the reason why I voted against spending that $100,000 on those plans, because I could not find a revenue stream for the completion of those plans. At that point in time, it was estimated the swimming pool plans were going to come back and they're going to be at a cost of a million dollars to complete that project. And so I asked myself, where is the revenue source? Where is that million dollars? Get us the plans and we'll find the money. But the plans came back at $2.7 million. And I think one reason for that was that there was not a truly defined role, funding source to keep the committee, the steering committee encased in to say, okay, here's specifically a million dollars you have to spend on the swimming pool. They went in and they did the best that they could with the parameters that were given to them, but I believe that if we had had a master plan for that, if we had had a dedicated funding source for capital projects similar to that, then they would have come back with a more financially feasible project. The master plan for our parks with a dedicated revenue source is definitely a needed document here, but it goes back, I guess, to the chicken or the egg concept. Which one is it? Do we want the chicken or what came first, the chicken or the egg? In my case, and what I have seen, and I guess what I'm presenting over here in this box, is the fact that we need to know what the revenue source is before we can truly come up with a master plan for the future from here. We have definitely many, many plans to look over. Some of them can probably still be very viable for our, for our community. There might be some that are completely outdated. Until we really know what, what funding source we can have, the box is there for inspection. Our 2012, 2013 Parks and Recs budget is $851,000. Montgomery's budget for their Parks and Recs is $5.8 million. Those figures do not include personnel costs. With personnel costs, Montgomery's funding was 17.5, and Prattville was 1.9 for the same year's budget. Montgomery's fund for their total budget was 8% of their overall budget. We have allowed 5% for ours. I really wanted to bring those figures out because also in that box, I have a newspaper article that was out Sunday, I believe it was, talking about all the different parks and what our sister community over there is actually planning on. And I think that we need to really look as a, as a complete total community that we are in competition some level with all the different communities around here. If we still want to be a very vibrant city, if we want to be able to attract the businesses, attract the residents, and also attract the potential of these tourism dollars to come in, we do need to be putting our best foot forward in our Parks and Recs department. We need a closer working relationship with all entities that utilize our facilities, including the school system. They utilize many of our facilities for sports and various events and vice versa with us, with them. There are several buildings that we actually utilize that they own. But their, their fund, the funding for some of their programs comes through some of the concession stands and the parking at Stanley Jensen Stadium and some other areas. So, you know, these, the master plans that, and the regular plans that this funding could potentially provide could be very beneficial, not only to, to the individual citizens here, but also to the collective group, I think, altogether. As one of our largest users of our parks and facilities, we need to continue to foster a good relationship with the Board of Education, include them in generating creative ideas, enhancing our parks and recs. In conclusion, quality of life programs equals healthier lifestyles. Councilors, we're falling further behind. We inherited a parks program that needs to be proactively managed. Over the past six months under new management, we have scrambled to improve everything that we can with limited funds and personnel. A great job has been done. We will continue to do so, but the only way to truly make a difference and get the parks to their intended glory is to plan. The only way to plan is to know what funding that will be available. Throughout my tenure as mayor, I've asked for the three Ts: time, tools, and talent. This funding will provide part of the tools we need to move forward to better our park facilities. The perception of our city is viewed considerably through our parks and recreation, and I hope that everybody really keeps that in mind as we move forward on this, because it is, this is definitely a part of our economic development team also. I have also talked with numerous hotel owners over the last several weeks. Very, very positive comments and reports from the vast majority of them, especially when it's laid out what the city's plans intend to be, which would be very beneficial not only to the city itself, to the citizens itself, but also to the, actually to Elmore County also, and then also to the hotel owners. Because with this $1.50, if it is passed by this, by this council, it, it will afford us to move forward with some of the plans that are over here in this box, but it will also afford us to bring in some of the additional sporting events that have, we have recently seen. And one of them I'll bring to example will be the bass tournament that came in, which that was sponsored and held by Montgomery, which they did put out at our Cooters Pond area, but the reason for that was the fact that the water level was up. But we were very fortunate to have them because we did get some very positive feedback on that. We were showcased in some national TV shows, but riding through a lot of the hotels prior to the tournament even started, I know I counted, and I had one hotel owner that they counted 19 boats in their one hotel alone, and that was before the tournament even started. I actually counted several more and several other hotels. So it's just a way to show that all these different sporting events can bring more revenue to the city of Prattville, whether it's the heads and the beds, it's the shopping, it's the food, it's the gasoline. But a couple of the concerns that I did hear from some of the hotel owners was that the, they thought a better alternative instead of the $1.50 was actually to take our lodging tax now, which is eight and a half percent, is take it up an additional penny, which make it nine and a half percent. They thought that some cases, when you use the, solve the cost of what a hotel room costs at one hotel, which might be $100, for example, and in a more of economical, economical hotel, it might be $50, they thought that the $1.50 was not in comparison there between the two rooms. But I still believe that the $1.50 is a fair fee because it, especially with the plans that if it, as long as it stays in the, in the capital project for our parks and recs, and we have a dedicated department, we have a dedicated council, and we have a dedicated mayor, I think that it will actually be the very best thing for this city, for this community, for this region. Besides that, I have plenty of plans I'll be glad to pull out and show each and every one of you guys. I got notebooks, don't have any dust masks, but I'll be glad to go get some if needed. Questions, concerns, comments?
Thank you, mayor. As I said, what we would do, we would go down by, as the way the council is seated, and you can remain standing, and they can ask questions or make comments at this time, and we'll go ahead with Mr. Striplin.
Thank you. I apologize for being late and received notice of how you planned to work the meeting, but my initial comment is, this is coming through the Leisure Services Department, and to me it would seem prudent for the Leisure Services Department to present what they're choosing, what they want to do, and then we ask questions about that, or did the mayor represent the Leisure Services Department?
No, the Leisure Services chair did give us a packet. We just got it tonight, this afternoon, so none of us has had the opportunity to really read it. So my thought process is still to state, how do we feel about it, and then let it coincide with Leisure Services. If you prefer to defer it to someone else, that would be fine.
Well, I've got some questions. I just didn't want to be repetitive if they could be all answered the first go-round, but I guess one of the, the questions that I have in the, in the projections of the revenue, when a business pays sales tax, if they collected 100 bucks of sales tax, because they are reimbursed for their efforts in collecting that tax, some portion of it, small, minute sliver portion, is retained by the business that is remitting that, that tax. Is that correct, Mr. Mosley? Does that sliver retainage apply to the lodging tax as well as to the sales tax? Would that sliver apply to a $1.50 or a dollar, or a dollar and a quarter, or whatever this fee would be assessed? But it potentially would apply if it was incorporated into an increased lodging tax? Okay, thank you. I think one of my concerns is that we are, we're venturing into an opportunity of where we take revenue that is generated by tourists, and if our premise is to reinvest those dollars that brought a tourist here, we want to reinvest in a manner in which that it will encourage that tourist to return and/or bring others to come to our community. That brings me to the situation of where, what is the definition of a capital improvement? For some people, there may be a thought of putting up a chain link fence, or painting a cinder block building, or adding a new swing set as being a capital improvement. I'm not sure that someone from Birmingham or Huntsville or Mississippi or Louisiana is going to want to come to Prattville and see our new chain link fence, or see our newly painted cinder block building. And so my concern is that we have a good, clear definition of what capital improvement is versus maintenance that we should have been doing and that we have deferred from doing because monies were either not available or reallocated somewhere else. And so that's, that's one of my concerns, is making sure that if we say it's for a capital project, that we all have an understanding of what a capital project is versus what a maintenance project would be. I'm, I like the idea of facilities that, where we, we as a city and as a population can enjoy the economies of scale of having facilities at one location. Right now, and I'm not saying that we have too many parks by any means, but I expect there's a tremendous loss of efficiency merely because we've got multiple sites that we're having to maintain turf, there are multiple sites where we're dealing with infield, there are multiple sites where we have restroom maintenance facilities, there are multiple sites where there are concession stand facility issues, staff equipment needs, and so forth. And again, since we all just got this information, I'm not sure where there's a priority or whether consideration has been given to trying to consolidate some of these opportunities into specific locations and have specialized, dedicated areas for softball, tennis, soccer, whatever. Again, don't know what the thought process is as to how that might be, but definitely from the benefit of consolidation and the economy of scale, that if you had a staff that was maintaining multiple fields in one location, they're not loading the equipment and traveling different places around town, or if you had areas with multiple concessions and bathrooms and so forth, that economy of scale flows through with each one of those. Also think that the long-term maintenance would be, be much better overall in, in that if they were somewhat consolidated. The negatives to that would be certainly one would be traffic issues that we would have to, to deal with. The other would be is, do we have land available to do something of that nature? I think that it would be helpful if we did somewhat an assessment of each of our existing facilities. That may have already been done of what we can, or what we could do. It was mentioned about the Cooters Pond. We don't often think of that as a park, but clearly some fishermen have expressed their thoughts to me that if there was a pavilion there, that when the fishermen came back, that they had a stage-type area of where they could show the fish and gather, that that would be an area that could potentially be used by quite a few of the fishing tours that we have other than just the bass group. I've been told there are opportunities for tennis in town, that we only have five courts. If we had six, there may be some grant money available. Maybe, you know, focus on opportunities like that. And again, they may all be addressed in this package that we all just received a few moments But those are some of the thoughts and questions that I have going into the, to the process. I've also given some thought to Mr. Chambliss's comments and the comments that were made last night at Intergovernmental Meeting. I too think that if there's an opportunity to work together, I think it's important that we, we give that consideration an opportunity. I also have some concern as to how the, the residents of Elmore County, or more specifically the communities in Elmore County, might feel about a third of their revenue collected going towards a, a school district. I don't know what they would, how they would think about that. I do agree that I'm not a major proponent of increasing taxes. I like the idea of growing the tax base. That, the, the biggest concern I have there is my understanding of growing the tax base. Essentially, you're talking about more residential homes and more business opportunities. If we, as a city, do not know what it costs to provide the services, and our theme is just increase the tax base, then I think we could find ourselves in a very negative financial situation. Increasing the tax base could easily be tested by an exation. We've increased the tax base, but if we don't know what it costs to provide police, fire, sewer, road maintenance, water, sanitation, so forth, we don't know what we're going to receive. So that would be a concern that I have, that if we don't accurately know what we have and we're not properly charging for that, just merely increasing the tax base is not necessarily going to, to make us better. But that concludes my questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And we will have all opportunity, that's why I think this is important. If there needs to be additional comments or questions, Mr. Striplin, we can come back around. Ms. Brown?
Mr. President, may I ask?
Yes.
May I go ahead and respond, or should I wait till the end to respond?
You may respond now.
Okay, well, thank you. We, you're right, we do not know what all the total costs are. We're actually in a transition point right here and now to, to reduce all of our costs. I think it's, the, the figures that we have put out there have showed that we've been able to reduce our cost from everything, from fuel to, anyway, the, one of the main themes for this administration is to, is for efficiency. And through the efficiency and the, the reorganization, we're, we're reducing our costs. But now, we do know that, and because of some of the studies that have been done, the productivity study, that 40% of most of your parks have been able to recoup fees, 40% to cover their costs. We were, last number crunching that our finance director did, we were 13.8%. And I do not believe that we're actually even that high, because, and that's where I'm still doing some reorganization. One of the biggest things that you do have in your parks is grass cutting. Our grass cutting crews are under our urban management, and actually just even today, I have done a, working very closely with, with urban management. We're actually having a Division A and Division B, and so that way they can track our costs inside of our parks, but then also we have some other ones. We have a couple of cemeteries, and that's a very costly few acres that have to be cut. That's a very difficult, it takes a lot more personnel time and equipment to, to cut those, which is still up underneath our Parks and Recs department. But it's, as far as, you know, what our costs are, we're, we're, we're working to get together on a lot of stats and figures to present to the council, and it's, most of them have been put on the website also, so I think- and it's, um, most of them have been put on the website also, so I think it's been very full disclosure on that. The, um, the, the parks and recs to me are very important to this community. I've stood up here and talked about being economic development, a portion of the economic development. Well, I'm gonna just push that off to the wayside and talk about how important they are just for the, the family lifestyles and the, and the activities and, uh, you know, the, the mental and the physical health in, included in there. And I've actually had some, um, early on when I took over as, as the role of mayor and we were really going through our financial crunches, uh, I actually had, uh, some that came to me and said, "You gotta get rid of parks and recs, you can't afford them." And I, my comment to them at that point in time was, "Well, if we're gonna do that, we might as well take that same dollar amount and go put it in our police department because of all the family values that our parks and recs bring and able to keep our youngsters out of trouble." I think our parks and recs need to be grown. That's one reason why I brought up about the dollar amount and the percentage. I'm not a big percentage guy, I know that some people are, but, you know, I'm just comparing ourselves to Montgomery there. We need to be concentrating more on our parks and recreation because that is a quality of life that is so very important. That is also, and I'm, should not even say it's part of economic development, but I just did. But it, it is so, so important. But when you get down to the fact that, you know, it was mentioned about what would exactly is a, um, capital project, that is something for this council and, um, you know, really to decide on. This money, if as proposed, will go toward, uh, be earmarked. And this side, at this level of government, I think earmarking is very, very good. It puts it in a capital project plan. And if the committee up here did not see when, whenever these plans or, or additional plans are brought to them, they did not see that it was a capital project, then they can put a stop on it. Like at some point in level, the mayor, the department head, there's several different layers that that can actually help either make or break a project here. I mentioned earlier about, um, um, committees, the sports committee. I feel like we'd be having a lot of input from them. Uh, several years ago, there was one committee pulled together, it was called Prattwell Next. They had a grandiose, um, plan, excuse me, of, of pulling something together that had, okay, there's a picture there, Prattwell's Next, thank you. I think it was eighty-something million dollars, but that included no, no land, have strictly, uh, facilities. And I was on that committee and one of the things I asked them early on was about, "Well, what about upkeep? What about the personnel? What about the, the, all the total expenses involved on that?" And everyone said, "Oh, well, just go ahead and get the plans out here and then we'll come back." And well, you know, where's the funding? So, plans are really easy. Accountability, I think is right here in this room. I think that the fact that we have the news here, I think the fact that we have some citizens here, the fact that we, um, full disclosure with, um, so much, so many of our day-to-day activities with inside this government, I think is, is a part of the accountability that, that will prove to everybody that this dollar fifty or whatever it might happen to be, if anything at all, can, can be very much utilized for the betterment, not only for the community, uh, but also for the hotel owners who have come in and made an investment. But the only reason, and I should not say the only reason, one of the reasons why the hotel owners are here in our town is because a council similar to this one, probably only had five people on board at that time, they made the investment to run a sewer line out to the interstate. And then some of this council, one of this council, may then help make the investment for the Robert Trent Jones out there. And so, I mean, there's been a lot of investments made, I think there's been, um, a lot of good decisions made. And I believe that, uh, this will also, in the, in the long run, will prove to be a very good decision. There again, I think you need to know what a funding source, a dedicated funding source can and should be before we start moving forward. But I think if it is done as planned, it will be very beneficial to each and every person involved. One other thing I did want to, uh, mention before I forget, talking with the hotel owners, they were talking about that they've already had some people who have, um, uh, reserved for some rooms and they thought that by having this be, um, implemented at the first of the month, might actually put them at a disadvantage and for the council to consider pushing it back just, uh, thirty days to ninety days or something along that line. But that would, just food for thought on that one. But I do apologize for not bringing that up earlier. Thank you.
Sitting on the Leisure Services Committee, I've gotten to hear a whole lot more, so I, I just will give you my thoughts on it. I agree that our parks have some serious issues and things we need to address. And I like the idea of a lodging fee going to, um, to efforts to increase tourism so that it, it, um, is reinvested in our community. I, I don't think that I had heard to, before tonight, um, about a master plan for the parks and I really like that idea because that way, um, we get some input from outsiders that can help us have some direction for how we do wanna spend this and, and how we can get the most out of our dollars. The funding for the, you mentioned that the pool plan, that was a hundred thousand dollars. What are your thoughts on funding payment for the master plan?
In last year's budget, it, uh, it was, if the number is correct, I think we, uh, I think we had sixty-five thousand dollars in there and we pulled that out. But most certainly, I think we do need a, a true roadmap. Um, other meetings we have, um, and we have talked a lot, biking, hiking trails, I mean, we have so many different, uh, opportunities out there. The, um, so I think we do need, it's, at one point in time, we had a window of opportunity and, uh, being in the, um, political arena that we are, we had roughly about two years and, you know, had election process in there and, and I don't think we really had the luxury of time, uh, to come up with these master plans, nor did we, especially the biggest thing was we did not have the funding. And that's one reason why I took the sixty-five thousand dollar, whether that planning was, out. But, um, so we sort of went, um, doing the best that we could with what we had and I, I think we did fairly well. But with the master plan, it, um, won the biggest portion, whenever you do start looking at the capital projects, especially early on, in my opinion, is that because this has been marketed or promoted as bringing heads to beds in. And so, early on, you need, we definitely need to make certain that we, whatever our, uh, capital project master plans are, we are able to bring those tourism people in to have those heads in the beds. But I think that's very important because we need, we need a continuous, uh, funding source. The, um, lodging taxes that we're collecting now, as you're very much aware, is that we have, um, Chamber of Commerce tied into a certain percentage of that. And the rationale behind that was actually hopefully that they'll work closer with our, with our Leisure Services or Parks and Recs Department to help bring in all these entities and the Ra- Robert Trent Jones or these other tournaments or recently, uh, two weeks or so ago, we had, uh, uh, state BMX, um, riders in. So, you know, we have the opportunities and we have the, the, the people, the dedicated city staff. We do need to, eventually, we're gonna have to increase the personnel in, in that department. But when you go back to the Chamber of Commerce, I mean, they're very, um, dedicated staff over there too, that is, they're again, part, all part of economic development. But the master plan, I think, is a very, very, um, needed thing because it definitely gives us a roadmap and who knows how long we're gonna be here. But it gives the next, um, uh, councillors and mayor an opportunity to, to see more in stone or in print of what, where our thoughts and plans were.
So you just build that back into the budget, go, if this becomes a possibility, is that what you're saying?
Actually, I already had plans of having it in my budget to, to present to you guys for 2014 of having the, the Parks Master Plan in there. Memory serves me right, I think, uh, Joel Duke and the Planning Department had three different, uh, master plans in there. One was for the Parks and Recs. Uh, I think one, anyway, it escapes me what the other two were, but, um, but sixty-five thousand dollars seems to be what I believe was intended for the, one was Parks, the other was the Creek, Creek Walk.
Okay.
I believe it's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, how you doing?
Doing great.
All right, um, just a couple of questions. It was brought to my attention, what is your initial intent with the dollar fifty? Are we, we're gonna move slowly with this, or we're gonna try to get a bond, a loan? Or what's your intent with that, and if you could just answer that?
Uh, the first intent is to set up a, the capital projects, um, um, bank account for it. Uh, you know, it, it depends on exactly what project seems to come out of it. It might be that, um, as we do get the committee, the, uh, Parks and Recs Committee together, uh, the council committee, and then also the sports committee together, uh, that, you know, they come up with a, um, a different thought process than what I have. But to answer your question, is I have worked with our city engineer and, uh, it was mentioned earlier about tennis courts and, and so forth. But my thoughts, my ideas is that, um, to help bring some of the beds to heads, heads in the beds here, is that if we could have some more softball fields, possibly move, um, built out at, um, uh, our Whitestone complex, around the Whitestone complex. Our city engineer has, has done some, um, uh, engineering drawings, but, uh, he's done his best efforts in, in saying that he can get some more softball fields out there, which will need lighting and so, and so forth. But I think with that would be a very first good move because if you take and move some of your softball fields out there, you can entice the travel teams, but then it also opens up the process of moving forward with our additional tennis courts. Then also, we, at this point in time, we have some lighting issues out at Newton Park. There's no need in spending the monies for, put the lightings out there if we do have plans of moving the parks away. So it's, there again, we go back to the chicken and egg thing. I do think, uh, my thought process is in the Newton Park, we could actually utilize the two big fields out there, eliminate the two smaller fields, uh, where the two smaller fields are now would open it up for, for tennis courts. So we're sort of moving in a direction that will actually not only bring a healthier lifestyle, but bring the, the hedge to the bed in this area.
I'd also like to state that, um, you know, I, I don't know a whole lot about other sports. Um, I was really involved in baseball. And with the Dixie Youth Program, um, the, the Whitestone Park, I know is in poor condition compared to other baseball fields within the state. Uh, I've traveled to Hoover, Vestavia, Millbrook, Montgomery, and various ball fields there. And with no revenue source, I agree that this is much needed and to improve our facilities for the kids. I know I'm on the Leisure Services and I've heard more like Denise stated. But also, I'm a, I went, I attended a sports committee meeting that you provided with the various, uh, sports. I didn't realize soccer was a big, uh, uh, sport here within the community. And, you know, the heartbeat within that community is, we need to improve the soccer fields. Uh, baseball community is that we need to improve the, the, the baseball, uh, facilities. And also, you know, with the football stadium, we have one of the best teams within the, you know, state of Alabama at the high school. And we provide the services for this, uh, the school. And at this particular time, we don't even ask for a dime. We have an opportunity to have this city grow and expand the, the parks. And it's just, if we don't take this opportunity and seize it, then we're gonna, like you stated earlier, we're behind the eight ball already. But, um, it, this is much needed, we need to improve our cities for the kids. And the heartbeat within that committee is, everybody's frustrated that our parks are in poor condition. And if we don't do something, we may not be back up here. And if we just sit on this opportunity and, and, you know, provide what we're here for. We're here to support the city of Pratt. I, I know there's proposals of other things and once it comes back through, I'll address that issue. But at this time, I, I think we need to seize opportunity for economical growth, as you stated. I know also the tennis courts, I know we've improved the tennis courts, but the tennis courts look great, but there's much needed improvement in that area. And I just, I agree with you, Mayor, that this is an opportunity that we need to, uh, to improve the city with the parks and leisure services. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have this time.
If I might ask that, um, uh, there's so many other sports out there too, uh, lacrosse for one, um, skateboarding, you know, I mentioned earlier about BMX. But, uh, I'd like to step back with Whitestone. Now, I know whenever Whitestone was, uh, initially built, way it was pres- presented to me as a, um, I was a youth sports official, baseball umpire at the time. I had Rocky Riddle, the, um, Parks and Recs Director at that point in time. He, um, gave me a little, uh, layout of the, of the facilities before it was opened up. And one of the things he told me was that they're planning on bringing in junior colleges. So that way, they were having a revenue source coming in by renting the facilities out. So, you know, this is not really a new concept of, um, of trying to capitalize on, on some of the sports out there. But it is something that has definitely, uh, been in the back of my mind because if we can improve the facilities and if we can bring in the outside revenue generators, that just makes it so much better, um, for our community, for our citizens. One of the complaints that I always hear about is it, about practice fields. Baseball, soccer, I mean, you know it. And, um, one of the things too that, uh, that I would like for us to do is actually have dedicated practice fields for all these, um, different sports if we could. But of course, that takes a lot of property, takes a lot of, um, upkeep on that too. One of the things we do have to have, in my opinion, is a little bit of a culture change. Because where we do want to provide all these, so I've mentioned before, this municipality cannot provide, cannot be everything to everybody. But we can be a conduit to help everybody get where they want to, but everybody's gotta be a little bit of a buy-in. Whether it's the football team with the fo- football stadium, or the Dixie Youth with Whitestone, or the Dixie, uh, or the softball girls with, uh, Newton Park or where they might happen to be. Um, we cannot, in my opinion, have the thought process out there is that the city will handle it. You just, um, pretty much build it and let the city come, come take care of it. We do need a, a more of a buy-in from the, from the community. During one of the, um, meetings recently at our municipal government meetings, I sat in on the state parks and I was very, very impressed that they were recouping ninety-eight percent of their costs through their fees. Ninety-eight percent of their costs through their fees. So very, very few taxpayer dollars are being used to, to keep our parks up and going. But now, they do use, utilize a very large, um, volunteer group. And that is something that, um, with some of our other, other committees, I mentioned earlier, the Creek Committee and some other ones, they're trying to have a buy-in to them, but that is definitely another area that we have a lot of room for improvement on. We have a lot of room for improvement in this department. One of the good things I think we have actually going for us is our director has a marketing degree. And I think that can be very, very, very helpful in, in moving this department, uh, this city in the direction that we need to go.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I have, have two primary concerns and, uh, I think both of them have been addressed. Uh, the first is that I just appreciate the opportunity for this couple of weeks to, to discuss in detail. And, um, part of the, the questioning is when you have a revenue stream like this, is, is how are you gonna spend it? How are you gonna prioritize? What do you, what, what is the plan? I, I think you've addressed that, we'll go through a planning process. That plan will be, uh, addressed by the Leisure Services Committee and then ultimately come to the council for approval. Uh, so I would imagine during that process, the priorities and what we do first, second, all that, that, that's part of that plan, so that, that's obviously a big, uh, concern. Uh, the second part was, uh, just being good neighbors. And, uh, I think everybody on the council knows my thoughts. But, uh, just coming off the recent legislative session where Elmore County had some similar, similar legislation defeated or not passed, if you wanna say it that way. I just wanted to be a good neighbor, get, talk with them, communicate with them, let them know what we're doing, see what ways we can work together and, and, uh, I think we've, uh, we've addressed that as well. Uh, certainly, um, time will tell, you know, there's, there's things we can work together on and there's things that we can't. And, and, um, And, and, um, I guess I'm, you know, three of us are in a, uh, interesting position because we serve, uh, citizens who are residents of Elmore County. And, uh, uh, so that is something that I just wanted to, uh, to take a little time and, um, and study and think about that. So, uh, those are my main, main concerns, uh, and I appreciate the, uh, the presentation that you put together that helped me understand that planning process and what we're gonna do because just throwing a number or throwing a revenue at a problem is, is not gonna solve that problem efficiently. It may solve it, but it may, may not, but it's definitely not gonna solve it efficiently. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. I do appreciate those comments, you know, it's, and, and you and I have been in many meetings, um, some with some Elmore County, um, officials, uh, we, I think we're thinking along the same line. I mean, we're, we are definitely connected at the hip with Elmore County, Ataga County, the Board of Education, Ataga County Board of Education, that, um, we, we definitely need to, to be working together, uh, to help move this community forward. And I do see a lot of opportunities there and, and, um, and as I had mentioned too, the, uh, Elmore County Commission or some, not to the commission, some of the commissioners is that the, um, the dollar fifty, if it does happen to go, uh, to be implemented, I mean, it, um, uh, I think we can, we should be able to work, uh, together to help move this community forward. And just because it's in Elmore County, uh, or just because it's in Ataga County, that, that is one thing the city of Prattville can always look at. But, uh, we do have some parks that are in Elmore County, Cooters Pond, which is, uh, I've heard many people and I've said it myself before, is very underutilized. The, um, opportunity there is almost screaming at me to, uh, to do something there, to, to make some improvements there that, um, and the only way that we can actually do that is with some additional funding. Now I can, you know, my role as, as, as mayor is, uh, is pretty much to manage the day-to-day operations and, um, we definitely can do that with the, with the staff that we have. But, um, sometimes all the best wishes, the best intentions, uh, the best personnel you have out there can only go so far. And at that point in time is when you got to have some capital improvements.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Thank you for your time today. Um, I wanna play devil's advocate a little bit on this one.
Okay.
As a man that has never played sports, never been good at sports, don't care about sports whatsoever, I'm looking at the economics of the thing. It wasn't long ago when there was two of us on this board and one of you down there that was facing something we'd never seen in the city before. We didn't know how we were gonna pay our bills. We didn't know how we were gonna cover our payroll. And it wasn't that long ago. My question to you is, and I, and please don't be offended, but the three people on the, on this board weren't in the middle of what we were in. They didn't understand, there's no way to comprehend what we had to do if you didn't do it. And, and you know what I'm talking about because there's a lot of moves we did that the citizens just didn't know about. And we budgeted three hundred and seventy thousand dollars for parks and we budgeted seventy percent of what you're saying we're gonna get in and we only get in sixty percent. Does the shortfall of fifty thousand dollars come out of the general fund because we've already spent it? Is the monies going to go straight into general fund? I, I would really wanna see our monies go into a bank account just for that, not to touch it for six months, build the monies up and then month by month, we know what we can spend because we have a six-month cushion. And, um, and just be very, very cautious about getting into these, the spending because we have taxed, taxed, taxed our citizens to death. And I voted for every one of them. And if it was to do it again tomorrow, I, and we were in the same vote, I would do it again tomorrow. And this tax isn't so much on the citizens as it is so much on people just passing through. So our citizens aren't really gonna feel it and it's one of these cases that if it doesn't affect you, you really don't care about it. But I would just caution the board, I would caution everybody up here, let's be very, very careful with our monies and I would really like to see us do this to, in, to increase our parks and recs because they desperately need it. And I know we need it, but at the same time, I would like to see us get a nice cushion of six months before we send, start spending a dime. And then try to keep that cushion ahead of us as we're spending money. And that way, if we, if we end up being low on funds, it's not gonna hurt us. If we end up being heavier on funds, great, you can do an extra project that you wanted in hand. And, um, but like I said, it's, this is a seven-person board with the mayor leading us and I'm willing to follow, but I would definitely ask y'all if you don't mind, let us do, get the game plan, but wait six months before we do any improvement to parks off of this money. And then start doing it month by month and keep that cushion in there so we don't end up in the rears because we still have a long way to go to get our city back to where we were and where it needs to be. And this is a good opportunity for us to do it, to bring advertising in, to bring, if we increase our parks, I think we'll get more restaurants, which in turn brings them more revenue. If we got more restaurants, we're bringing more hotels, which I'm sure they don't wanna hear that, but if we wrap more hotels, you got more people staying here. And it is a way to build it, but let's just be one step at a time because we have jumped out there before and it's five years down the road, it's cost us big time. Or ten years down the road, we've really paid for it. So if you don't mind, I would like to just throw that in that y'all would save some before we start spending and then let's go for it. And second thought is, can we do Newton Park first? Thank you.
Well, you know, um, you are actually are part of the checks and balances. Yeah, you know, uh, you guys are actually control of the, uh, of the purse strings. You know, it's, it's, uh, so I think with the checks and balances that we have in place, I don't think you have to worry about, uh, anybody overspending. It, um, um, there's, there's always that possibility, but, uh, I don't think that you're gonna have to worry losing sleep over that. And, you know, one of your comments is that we actually have a lot of them passing through and we do. And if this is implemented correctly, they won't be actually passing through. Hopefully they'll be staying for a little bit, for a little bit longer, spending their, their monies here a little bit longer at either the shop and the eateries, the, the golf courses or whatever. And then maybe eventually they might even decide to kick their feet up and stay in Prattville permanently. So that's, um, uh, there's, there's still a lot of planning that needs to be done, but there again, it's a chicken and egg. I think we need to know what kinda revenue source. And then also some of them, um, you know, what is exactly our, um, capital projects? Yeah, obviously if you go out here and build a new building and everything else, everybody knows that is a capital project. If you do go over here and build some softball fields or additional fields around Whitestone, uh, I would consider that a capital project. But by utilizing that concept, uh, we put up new lights with that since we're already utilizing the Whit, uh, the Newton Park for, for softball, that should in turn save us some of our electricity bill because of the upgraded for the lights there. And then as we do move forward, um, for the additional tennis courts, which I would consider capital projects, you know, the next person might not because all it is, well, all you're gonna do is lay down some clay, throw on some asphalt. But you know, it's, to me, it is definitely a capital project. And, and one good thing about tennis and golf that I mentioned before earlier, those are a couple of sports right there that can actually take you from knee-high to a grasshopper to almost out there, you know, with your, with your canes. I mean, it's, it's, um, age eight to a hundred and eight. Uh, where baseball, football, especially football is king in this area. It's a good sport to watch, but most people cannot play it. Uh, baseball somewhat the same way. Soccer, the popularity of it is just overwhelming to a southern guy like me, which I still say that we named football wrong, but that's a whole different story. But, um, uh, soccer is a very big deal there. Um, uh, it, it has attracted a lot of people. I know in the Dixie Youth Program, at one time, we had about twelve hundred kids in this program, the boys had about twelve hundred kids in the Dixie Youth Program. I believe they're down about seven hundred or so now. The soccer numbers I'm not aware of, um, specifically, but I definitely know that they are up. So that is definitely another area. But, um, there again, as I mentioned in our tri-governmental meeting the other night, um, we need to look in our rearview mirror because there's other communities out there that, um, that are part of this process also. Thank you.
Lucky number seven. Sometimes it's hard to wait. Mayor keeps joking that one of these days he's gonna call for a vote that starts on this end and really throw Kathy off and put me, put me under pressure. All right, let's talk about quality of life. That's really why I'm here tonight. That's why I'm sitting at this dais. That's the reason that I'm sponsoring this bill. That's the reason that this is part of my heart. Uh, I have two children. I have a grandmother who all live in Prattville. I, I see all ages. Counselor Bowles over here is saying I don't play sports. I've never played sports. I'm not interested in sports. Well, let's talk bottom line, let's get you interested. You don't have to play.
I have chickens, who needs sports?
You need a place for your chicken. You need a park to walk your chicken on a chain. You need places for your children. I know you're very excited about the splash pad and that your youngest is excited about that. This is what we're talking about. This is how I'm reeling you into this, is we're talking about quality of life for Prattville. Now, quality of life means we're gonna attract people to live in Prattville. We're gonna get that tax base that Albert Striplin's talking about. We're gonna grow our rooftops. Quality of life makes people stay in Prattville. Quality of life adds to our school board, brings people in and grows our teachers, grows our school system. This is what this is about, is our quality. And that's the reason that I'm involved with this. Um, talking also about the tax base, I'd like to address that as well. Um, I very much agree. I'm a conservative person in general. I don't like to say I'm for any tax. What I see this as is a fee that is not affecting the citizens who live here in Prattville. It is a fee that is causing, um, people who are making a choice, a choice to stay in a hotel. If they make that choice, then they are choosing to participate in paying this fee. It is a choice. They made it. No one forced it upon them. Uh, it is not without question. It is something that they will choose to do. And, uh, when we're talking about our tax base, we are talking about growing it in a different way, not growing it by population in this particular situation, but growing it by having someone participate in Prattville's tax base that doesn't live here. I see that as a bonus. I don't see that as a punishment. Um, volunteers have already started a lot of projects in our parks, in our recreation here in this town. I mean, we have a tremendous amount of people who have come alongside Prattville and say, we'll give our money, we'll give our time, we'll give our expertise, we'll get people out there on that creek, we'll get, uh, splash pad voted in. They're showing intensity in volunteerism in this town. And I think it's time for the council to come alongside and say, we want to reward your intensity, your desire with some funding. Here's what we can do. Some of us can go out and we can volunteer, but what we can do as a council is we can come along with the support of the funding that they need. Now, we're not talking about a huge amount of revenue. If you look at the sheet here, this, this is proposed revenue and you will see, um, a fee for a dollar, a dollar twenty-five and a dollar fifty at fifty percent occupancy, all the way up to seventy percent occupancy. Mr. Mosley has run these numbers. This is proposed. We have no magic wand to say we are going to get three hundred thousand dollars next year. We might not. We may, like Counselor Bowles says, we may get sixty thousand. So I agree with you that we do not spend the money before it comes in. That is not anybody on this committee's goal is to spend money we do not have. It is to begin accruing, accumulating, saving towards projects, towards capital projects. And I know that, uh, like Mr. Striplin said, there will be a lot of addressing what is a capital project? What do we want to spend our money on? That's not something that Jerry, Denise and I, as a Leisure Services Committee, are going to go and have a secret meeting, fund a project, get a loan, spend money we don't have and come out here and do. This will involve everyone on this council and this will also involve the public's opinion as we start projects, we'll begin the funding. It will be voted on. Every project that is proposed will have to come before this council has an ordinance or a resolution and be voted on. So I don't think there's going to be any secrecy, any lack of, um, money before a project is ready to move ahead. This is not something that we're going to do based on proposed numbers. We are going to begin to accrue money. That is my plan at least, is to see the money go into an account and begin to build. It's not something that we can go out and spend tomorrow or before it has come in. This is the start and that is my goal, is to start funding for leisure services and watch it grow. And I think it's gonna happen because I think that the population in this town wants to see us find an original revenue stream such as this. And I think that we will find in the future that there will be more creative revenue streams. I've already been talking, um, with Ms. Cook and with the mayor and with some others about ideas at Cooters Pond for other things like, um, fishing charges. There have been many creative ideas that have come up that have just yet to surface and be put into the form of an ordinance. And as a representative for leisure services, I did not choose to play sports. I did not choose leisure services when I was elected to this counselor, council. Mr. Wood put me in charge of this department. He didn't come and say, I think you'd be good at this, or would this be your first choice? He said, Ms. Boone, this is your assignment. And I took it seriously and I take it seriously. And my job is to fund her and this department and the citizens of Prattville. And I will do my best job at that and this is my idea for the best idea yet to come before you. So I'm asking for your support. I think it's starting small. I think it will grow bigger. I want to see it happen. Um, I want us just to start small and see what we can do for the city of Prattville. And, uh, I ask for your support on this whenever we bring it forward and I hope it will be very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. I give you, uh, A-A plus on that one. So, thank you. What I have in front of me right now, the pool plans, I mentioned earlier, I actually voted against these plans, uh, roughly about six years or so ago. And there again, the reason being was not the fact that the swimming pool, um, was leaking roughly about two inches of water, uh, a day. It wasn't the fact that some of the tiles were falling off of the pool. It wasn't the fact that, um, some of the valves didn't work properly on the pumps and all that. It was the reason why I voted on the pool plans, voted against the pool, pool plans because there was no revenue source. Now, the previous council, previous administration, uh, I think we could all agree, the pool needs to be replaced. Um, the pool may or may not be on this, um, first round, if ever, but these are definitely a hundred thousand dollars worth of plans that we have spent here roughly six years ago and there's been no revenue source dedicated toward capital projects like this. Now, I think it's very ironic that I was pretty vocal about it. I actually said that the swimming pool is a luxury item and in one shape, form and fashion it is. But it's also can be a very therapeutic item. It can also be a, um, a family-oriented item. It can be a very competitive item because it's, you have a lot of, um, uh, teams that are utilizing our pool, uh, for competition and, um, from the ages of probably six to up, six and up. But then also you have another group that is out there that are plus sixty that are actually utilizing it. So it's, um, you know, I think it's very ironic. I voted against these plans that I hold here in front of you, but if, with, this could be potentially one of the things that, that could be spent on, on this money. Not to mention at one point in time, we actually hosted a lot of state events here in the city of Prattville, state swim meets. And I'm uncertain when the last swim, state swim meet was held here, but I feel for certain that it was almost because of the condition of the pool. That's all about I have to say, Mr. President, unless you have some questions for me?
I don't have any questions at this time. I appreciate everybody's comments. I think a lot has been learned from, uh, having this work session. I ultimately agree, uh, with, with Counselor Boone. Uh, let me thank you also for your proposed packet tonight. Uh, it has some of the things that I made notes on. And one of the things that I'm concerned about is exactly some of the stuff that has been said here tonight. We, questions, for instance, exactly why should a lodging tax be imposed? We've answered that, uh, to improve our parks. Just simple. Before we get to any capital, major capital project, in my opinion, we got parks, uh, soccer fields, baseball fields, all need improving right now. Uh, you mentioned the pool. Based on these figures, we all can add two plus two. It'll be somewhere down the road.
Down the road, yes, sir.
Counselor Bowles concerned about letting money grow. I think we have a body in place, a finance committee along with Leisure Services Committee, uh, who's prudent enough to realize that we just can't jump out there and spend when we are probably talking about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So that's not a whole lot of money to be spending. But I think it is a start. We don't wanna end up, and I know where Counselor Bowles is coming from, in a situation like we were several years ago. We all know what has happened in the past. Major investment, you get in debt and you have little return. I don't think that's gonna happen with. I don't think that's gonna happen with this proposed lodging fee. I truly don't. But I do believe that we have to start. We need to start somewhere. I think the questions have been answered. We need to make sure that we take care of what we have, though, in my opinion. We need to take care of the parks that we have to improve upon them first of all, and then look at the aspects of any other capital project. Again, I appreciate all the comments. I think all of you all have done your homework. I think you're serious about what you're doing, and that's one of the reasons I wanted to call a work session, to allow each of you all to express your opinions and how you feel about this. I know it's not gonna be popular with some people, but that's, you know, the nature of this business. I think we should ultimately move forward. We still guarding the purse strings, as you say, and we're guarding them close. And we appreciate you, Mayor, for bringing your presentation forward. You could have kept that big old box in there. We all know that we have a lot of stuff going on here. But again, I appreciate it. If any other council member would like to make any other comments to the mayor or ask any other questions, you feel free to do so at this time. No other comments or questions? Thank you all for coming to this work session and this close.